Well, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to talk with you about this. This is a project that we're very excited about. Our group is called Places to Age and we think that our name sort of reveals what our goal is and what we're working on. So we have a number, a list up there of all the people that are on our steering committee. And some of those people are with us tonight. So Andy Bruno is here. And I'm Shoa Bronkabasic. And Dee Dubin and Marilyn Walden is here. And we have a new member, Jeff Eaton. Hopefully, some of you know Jeff. He was working for, as an interim director for the Chaffey Housing Authority. And he is our BB representative right now. And we hope maybe to get some other people from BB interested in this in the future as we go along. And so in addition is Lydia Siegel, Judy Hope, Wendell Pryor. And Betsy Fitterberg is a non-voting person who sits with us on our steering committee. So our goal, we have long-term goals and we have immediate goals. Our immediate goal is to bring assisted living with memory care unit to our county. And we know that there are a lot of people in the county that would love to see a full continuum of services like they have down on the Front Range or Alamosa. And hopefully, we will get there, but we felt like we needed to start small. And the reason that we wanted to start with assisted living is because that is the point where people have to leave our county. And we think that we have in our county, a unique group of older people, our retirees, who are people that are very active and are being, you know, and many of them are active into their 80s. And that these are people that love to hike and be on the river. And they are also people that came to this county with expertise. And many of our retirees and older residents have started nonprofits, volunteered in nonprofits, have shared their expertise, I think county-wide. And have really, I think, made a better quality of life in our county with all of their efforts. They also have a real sense of place. And I think a sense of place is really important when you get to our age. You know, I can look up at Chavano and I always has a special place in my heart because my daughter and I climbed that, or hiked that together on my 60th birthday. And I think those of us who are 65 plus in the community here have a lot of memories like that. And we also have a lot of good friends and a support system. And we would like to age with those good friends and that support system. And so that is why we started with the assisted living. Because at that point, of course, people actually need assistance either with physical issues or with mental issues. So we also see a great need in our county. 20%, 27% of our county is 65 and older. And before I go any further, I meant to tell you that, you know, we have some information that we'd like to share with you. But we would also like this to be a discussion. So, you know, if you have comments or questions or I'm going to ask my colleagues here if they want to add to something that I've said, to please just jump in and do that. And Jeff is here. So thanks for coming, Jeff. So he's our newest member of our steering committee. So and of course, right now, we have very little to offer. And there is no continuum of care in our county. So there's another very unique thing about our group of 65 plus in this county. And that is that we own over 2,600 homes and live in over 360 rentals. Right now, people are probably staying in their home longer than maybe is optimal because they don't have any alternatives and they don't want to leave. They don't leave their friends or maybe their family. And so we have been working very closely with Chaffey Housing Trust and also Chaffey Housing Authority, but in particular, Chaffey Housing Trust, looking at some models that might help people, both in their home, but also if we actually had some assisted living and hopefully, as time goes on, you know, we might have some independent living and some other alternatives for people, that some of that housing then would be released back into the open market and could also help with the housing shortage that we have in the community. It could ease that. And so we think that is really important. Do you guys want to say anything else about?
Well, the growth rate of elder plus 65 in the county is projected at 2% or 3%. So we think we'll be at 7,000 by, easily at 7,000 by 2045. And we have to plan accordingly. And if we don't have a continuum of care services for this group of people, we're going to look back in 20 years and say, what were we thinking? We really, we should have started this 10 years ago. We've got to get our hands around this now. These services for this population, this population isn't going away other than they want to move out of the county. So we need these services.
And right now, we do have a situation sometimes, I think, many of us have had friends where one of the couple really needs some assistance. And then the other, you know, the other half of the couple is fine. And then they're faced with, do we both leave? Or does the person who really needs assistance have to go to Alamosa or Colorado Springs? And then we've got a spouse is trying to drive back and forth in the winter, you know, which is not a good situation also. So there's lots of complications we can add to that. Okay, ready for the next one? So we have, we want to really look at the financing and how we can finance this. It's a big project and it's not a cheap project. Talking millions of dollars here to get something, even if we start with a small facility. And we want it to be available and access to all. And so we've been looking at this as sort of three different economic groups in the county that we have. We have people that are kind of in that under, let's say, 80% AMI. And then there's certain kinds of funding that will support those Medicaid beds, people that earn less than $30,000 a year. And then we have the middle income group, which is probably going to be our 80% to 120, 130% AMI. And those people are people that can pay something, but they don't qualify for the low-income funding that we would hope to get. And that's a group that is going to, where we're really going to have to try and fill that gap. And then, of course, we have the people that can pay the market rate and they will pay the market rate. And in a lot of these facilities, sometimes that those people that pay the market rate help subsidize some of the other groups. We are working with the land trust, as I mentioned before, and we hope to use a land trust model. And I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, but it's one where the land trust, or if the land is donated by the hospital, they could hold the land. Or a city, they could hold the land, but whoever maybe would donate or if there's a private donation, then it would be the land trust that would hold the land. And so that cuts down on some costs because you're not paying for land. And so that also gives a lot of control that that land, you can deed restricted to say that in perpetuity, it will always be used for some kind of program or housing for 65 plus. So we can add some different controls over that. So I kind of got into some of the next slide, which tells you more about the land trust model. So not only is it retained, and I said it could be deed restricted, but the physical structure that is built on top of it can be sold. And usually, they pay a lease on the land. And depending on how it manages, sometimes you could take that lease and put it into a fund to help you with your next phase. And so we're also looking at that. And next slide. Do you guys have anything else you want to say?
Please just. So we're looking at the land trust model in two ways. One in development. Okay, so tell, we have three sides. We'll go into that later. We have three sides. Two of the sides are possible for land trust, where we actually do the development using a land trust model. One of them is not appropriate for a land trust model. Then we're looking at land trust for people who need to move out of their homes. If it's appropriate, the land trust, they would get market rate and the land trust model could be applied and that those homes become affordable, affordable housing. So we've got two ways we're currently looking at land trust model. And we can go into a lot more detail as it develops or if you have questions.
Yeah, if you're interested in that. Yeah, so we have three potential sites right now. And we are going to start with this facility in the Salida area because of the hospital. For a memory care unit and an assisted living, we need to be close to the hospital. And we're hoping that down the road, we can do some other things up here. But right now, that's the easiest thing. And operators for a facility like this, they want to be close to a hospital. So we're starting with that. So the hospital has a piece of property. And we have been in conversation with them and they have been thinking about this for quite a few years, even before now. So that's one possibility. And then, of course, the Vandavera South Ark neighborhood. The city is in the process right now of deciding what kind of housing they're going to put on that land. I think the acreage that they have is almost shrinking by the day because they've been doing engineering studies and finding out that with all the springs that are on that property and all the floodplains on that property, they thought they were going to have 50 acres and now it's looking more like 30 acres. So things are kind of changing with that, but we have put in our request along with everybody else for a piece of that property. And then we also have a private person who is willing to, we think, donate some land. We're in negotiations about that. And that would be 10 acres located between County Road 120 and 140, kind of right again, you know, close to the city here. So that's another possibility. So that's what we're looking at.
We're hoping that a decision is, with any of these things, it always takes a little bit longer than anybody really wants, you know. But we're hoping we can make a site selection or have that series of happenstances to clarify which of those three becomes the site for development by at least Q4 of this year.
So and who knows, we might get lucky and two of them would come through and that would let us do a lot of different things. Okay. So we have people in our steering committee that have really been studying the finances. And I think one of the things that we want to relay to you tonight is that we are definitely here to help you with ideas that you might have and hoping that we can all work together on this. And we know that for us to go to a foundation or even the state for funding, that we're going to have to prove that we have community support. So we are right now under the umbrella of the Chaffey County Community Foundation. And we are going to be doing a fundraising campaign throughout the community, throughout the entire county. And then you all know, because you have been involved in lots of grants, that not only are letters of support, but at least some financial assistance from probably the municipalities in the county. We certainly don't expect you to pay huge amounts and we know you do your budgets years before the year that you can do them. But we are working really hard to identify all the places that we can apply to right now. And Dee has our first grant going in right now to the Colorado Health Foundation. Do you want to say anything about that?
They have a funding opportunity called Community Initiated Solutions. And I thought, well, that fits because we, our people of the community, came together and said, we've got to do this. They don't fund actual capital construction under that type of program, but they will support efforts in the community. So we're applying for funds to help us with the marketing awareness campaign and forward planning of this. And we'll see the grant application goes in Thursday and we don't hear about it until October, but it's a start. And we're open to any other suggestions that people might have, you know, talk to this fund, look at this opportunity. Because it's so important, because we want the mix of available for low-income people, Medicare recipients. We most likely will need a nonprofit organization to own the planning and the development of the place rather than a private developer who comes in and runs it for profit. So as a nonprofit entity, we as a community need to support the plans that are ahead.
And we also think that getting the word out to everybody, not just councils, not just, just everybody. Because this is an issue that affects everybody, whether they know it or not. So the people at the 30-50 range have parents who are aging and they often have hard decisions with parents. And so we want to get the word out that this is important for everybody in the community to at least consider solutions for. And we think before we go for a capital funding, you know, a broad donation request to the community, we should educate the community as best we can. And we're going to, we're going to take on that task coming up in the next quarter and the next two quarters to really educate everybody we can in the community through like the various festivals and markets. I'm going to be camped out at Walmart. You know, we're really going to let everybody know that this is going on in the community and we need their backing. And then, once we have more and more groundswell, then we'll start a capital funding campaign that will include the community also.
I think one of the other things to consider too is the need to educate 65-plus people who are already living in our county. I hear so many people say, oh, you know, it's not a problem. I'll just get Medicare to pay for my assisted living or, and not understanding that that's not how Medicare works. Or I'm just going to have somebody come into my home and take care of me 24/7. Well, just recently, I had the opportunity to call Touch of Care and Help the Grant and the organizations in our county who provide non-medical professionals, but housekeeping, personal care. They're not even taking people, no new clients in our whole county. They're not accepting any. So it's a challenge. We've tried every way we can think of to keep people in their homes. Dee and I several years ago started Ark Valley Helping Hands. You're probably pretty familiar with that. That provides volunteers to go into people's homes and help them with some minor chores and things to keep them aging in their home as long as they can. We have a new home share program where we're trying to encourage people who live, single people who live in a big three, four bedroom house to be willing to have somebody come in and share their home, maybe with, for a reduced rent to help them with some chores. But I think that a lot of older adults don't appreciate what a crisis this really is. I had somebody talk to me the other day who said, you know, I don't think anybody should move here until this assisted living situation is resolved because you don't really pay attention, I guess, until you have needed. But here you are and you don't have the resources that you thought, of course, I can go to another supportive housing situation, which in our case is Columbine Nursing Manor in Salida. That's the only option.
Marilyn.
I think there's a lot of education.
How does Columbine fit with, you know, with this concept? Where is Columbine in this concept?
Columbine is the ultimate, highest level of care. It's a licensed skilled nursing facility, SNF, more commonly known as a nursing home. So what we're talking about is the middle between independent living and skilled nursing. And that's this piece that's really big, missing with assisted living, which is still somewhat independent, but has supportive services, like you have a nurse on staff that's going to come in and check your meds, make sure you're not getting mixed up on what you're taking. There's going to be meals provided, activities, transportation. There's a list of things that are very specific to assisted living facilities.
And I do have some to add also.
I was just going to say that Columbine used to have a memory care unit, but they discontinued that for whatever reason. And with the incidence of dementia and Alzheimer's also raising everywhere, we think that that's a really important piece, missing piece for us to pay attention to.
What's the smallest assisted living facility that you could start with?
Well, as is on this chart here, we've looked at, there have been lots of studies done, you know, and I think the most recent was what, 2018? 2019? 2019. And so we have some idea of what to start with. And so if we could just do whatever we wanted and just get something started right away, it seems like the need is around 40 units for independent living. The studies that we looked at were 50 for assisted living with a range of 25 to 40. And what we're thinking of starting with is probably around 30, 35 units for assisted living with another 10 units to 15 units in memory care. Sometimes when people build these facilities, they say it takes them two years to get it filled. And what we would like to do is a model where we do architectural planning so that we have the basics of the facility and all the shared space. And then that number of units that's small enough for us to fill it right away and then have it set up from the beginning with a plan to add units onto it so that we could expand it that way. And then the skilled nursing, there are Medicaid beds that have been allotted to them. And that's a very, very old facility. And they do get visited by the state for reviews and they're getting lots of recommendations of things they can change. And we're hoping over time that we can get a new facility, a new skilled nursing care facility over time as well. So, okay, our next slide. So this tells about the partnerships that we've been working on, the people that we've been talking to. And, you know, certainly, we've already signed papers and are under the umbrella of the Chaffey County Community Foundation. And we've been working very closely with the Housing Trust and the Housing Authority. We've also been in lots of discussions with the hospital. And of course, Marilyn is an ex-board member, hospital board member. And Lydia Siegel, who is on our steering committee, is a current member of the hospital board. So we're very close in communication with them. And then we actually got started sort of within the Age Strong County Group that meets on a regular basis. And we started out as a little subgroup of them to look into this kind of housing as people age. And so we're working very closely with Public Health and the whole county support system, human services system for that. We are also working with UAA COG. And some of these groups are very critical. Some of them have joint state funding and federal funding they can apply for. But like Chaffey Housing Trust has a few kinds of funding that they can apply for that CHA doesn't have and vice versa. And then, of course, UAA COG, they have some funding sources that nobody else can access too. So we're hoping, you know, to really have these partnerships and to have that help us in accessing all this funding. And then obviously, we want to work with the commissioners and you all as trustees and the trustees in Poncha and the council in Salida. So we are visiting all of them. Last week, we made a brief presentation to the Salida City Council. And then next week, I think we're going to Poncha. And I'm not sure, do we have one scheduled with the commissioners yet or?
Hopefully, July 3rd.
Hopefully, July 3rd. We want to at least update all of you and let you know what we're working on and answer the questions you have. Okay, so next slide, please. So we've sort of been talking about this, but this is maybe a visual that will help lay out. We're finding as we talk to people that there's a lot of confusion between independent living and assisted living. How many of you have a parent that's been in either one of those? Okay, once you, and I have two, I think, oh. Once you have a parent that goes through this, you begin to learn the differences between these. And the ones that they always advertise on TV, those are the independent living ones.
That's right, in the brochure.
Those are the ones where, you know, maybe they're providing the transportation, but you're getting to go to a play or, you know, to the shopping center or out to some special event. Or, you know, some of them are focused on even building a daycare center with them, which we think is a really neat model, you know. And then, you know, the older adults read to the kids and that, there have been a lot of studies done on that and that's a benefit to both of those age groups. But once you get into assisted living, you're probably not going out so much. And I'm going to go through some of the kinds of services that are offered. But that is really, like I said, the point where people have to leave because people need more care. They need help getting dressed, you know, they need help bathing. And then, of course, if there are memory issues involved, you need specialized trained people to work with them. They have to have a very structured time and we'll go into that a little more depth. But you can certainly see the continuum and we would like to get to the point where we have that whole continuum in our county. But we're starting with what we think is our most critical need. So here's our next slide. And this is just a list of all of those things. Usually, when you're in assisted living, you're on your own to take your medication. But in independent living, but in assisted living, you usually have someone that's checking on you and making sure that you're taking your medication when you should take it. And then, of course, I said the whole bathing, dressing, toiletry kinds of things. People are getting a lot of assistance with that. They usually do still try and have some social and recreation activities because we all know, and I think we're hearing a lot now that, you know, if you want to keep yourself from getting some sort of dementia, that um you want to do a a lot of physical activity. Um you know, and then there's the whole, all the the games and crossword puzzles and the mental activities. But but they're finding that the socialization and and still being with other people and and having conversations and talking about what's happening in your community, or something that's a new thing that you've never heard about, that that's a really critical part of it too. So the, you know, the physical and the mental activity, and then the social activity. Um so in if you are in assisted living, you you have you have someone there twenty-four hours a day. So if there's an emergency, if something happens to you, you have that care right there. Um and and so you really are getting a lot more assistance than what you get in an independent living. Um and then the next slide is on memory care. And um this is an environment that um I think assures the family that their loved one is in a safe place. Um usually um there are either locked doors because people tend to wander out, even in the middle of the night in the cold in those kinds of facilities. And so you have a a lot of safety concerns that are going on there. Um and um and very structured days really seem to help those people. And I'm I'm gonna ask, Marilyn, do you wanna say anything more about that? I mean, you're our kind of medical person here, and I'm just talking from personal experience with my.
I I would say something that with memory care, the pressure on the family is also very great. If you've got somebody declining with Alzheimer's or dementia, it affects the entire family, and there's there, so if you get somebody in a good facility where they're well taken care that their family support structure has more ease too. So you're not just impacting that person that's going into memory care, you're affecting the whole family and allowing the family to be at a much safer or functional level. Um but we have a lot of personal stories about people, families that have gone through this process, and um it doesn't just affect the patient or the person that's going into memory care. It's the whole family.
And then the next slide. Um so I just wanted you to know um kind of what our future directions are and and what what we're working on. Uh right now, we're in the process of forming an advisory committee, and I guess we should really say a technical advisory committee. Want to have an attorney on there, an architect, an engineer. Um people that, as we're going through this, are working on grants, or we have questions that uh about what the facility might look like, or or how we can do this, or how we can do that. We want those technical people there. And we are very open to any suggestions you might have uh for for people that have those kinds of technical skills that could help us get through that pre-construction phase with all the planning uh that we need to do. Um we are also uh have been in conversations with CMC. Uh I think we all see in the news on sort of a regular basis how difficult it is to get people to work in a care facility, how difficult it is to get caregivers. Um and so CMC has a initial class um that caregivers take that will help them be qualified to become a caregiver. And so um we want uh to work with them on that. Um and um we also have been in discussion with them about, as a benefit to caregivers, uh for them to be enrolled in one of the various medical programs that CMC offers. Um and so they have, you know, EMT, uh paramedic, um they have um people that are respiratory experts. You know, uh they can train people to be phonetons.
Yep.
And um and then they're also starting on full nursing programs. Right now, they can provide all the background classes for a nurse. Um but then to get the full degree at this point, I think the Breckinridge Campus is the one that they send people to. And they are working as a unit so that people that are have been taking classes here could maybe do some of their work on a weekend or a three-day together so that they could be here then the other four days of the job. So we're working with them on all those kinds of things. And I know we talked about um requests that various groups have for uh the South Ark land. And CMC is looking at that for possibly housing, possibly expanding their office programs and so on. Uh but then if that person could stay in CMC housing, you know, what a great package that would be to attract uh people to to get work as caregivers in those. And then we're we're also uh planning on uh working with hospice too, uh so they can do that. So um so and then we're working on various ways uh that the land trust model can help us. They even do things like help, you can become a member with your house. And uh they would then own the land, but but you and your family would still own the house. And that would allow them to come in and um either uh sort of remodel the house, put in ramps or things, change bathroom setups that might help someone stay in their housewarming. Um but they also have programs in, you know, um in other places, and we're we're are the and trustees very open to working with us on this, um that will actually help build something like an ADU uh where you could have a caregiver in that ADU. And um so there's all kinds of things that we are exploring there. So we are working on finalizing the the number of units right now, uh what those units might look like, um what the whole facility would look like. Um I think I've mentioned to you already that you know, the financing is such a big deal, and and we're working very hard on that. Um and we're also looking at nonprofit providers who would operate uh these kinds of facilities. Um so I think the last thing I would like to draw your attention to, I think in your packet, we gave you this little handout um that uh sort of talks about some of these details, but um anything else you think you guys have to say or questions that you guys have or comments or? Yeah.
Um yeah, thank you for doing this. My wife and I both have hopes of bringing both our moms up here and um and helping take care of them, and you know, while we're going through this process. Uh it's kind of a dream, because we'd have to be able to afford to have buildings for them, but um one of the things we've been hearing a lot of is uh that the healthcare coverage alone doesn't even really help for elder care up here. So not just the housing or facilities, but the actual, the Heart of the Rockies just really isn't capable of helping elder care right now. So would this also address that through, um you know, you mentioned a provider taking over, and so would there also be additional medical support that comes with that, or is it relying on the existing infrastructure at Heart of the Rockies?
Well, certainly in these facilities, they may have visiting doctors, as my experience with my mom. But they don't have a doctor there all the time, and that's one reason we wanted to be close to the hospital, is so they'd be a doctor. But certainly in an assisted living center, you have nurses, and you usually have twenty-four-hour nursing care. So um you know, so that is, again, a big deal, I think, to know that if you have a family member that, say, has a weak heart, or somebody that has had a stroke, but it was a mild one, and you're worried about them having another one to, you know, to have a nurse that's right there on the premises that can address that.
Yeah, definitely. I guess uh part of my question there is, and this is just what I've heard when talking about, so I actually don't know the real situation, but do you feel like there are any there are any healthcare providing constraints that will also have to have to be addressed on top of this?
So Dr. Siegel just um recently has explained that she doesn't have any concerns about our capacity to provide family practice medicine to everyone who needs it. The one nice thing is that we do have a physician coming um in the next month or two, who is has a fellowship in gerontology, which we have never had before. That's been a really busy uh missing piece of uh medical care. So I'm really optimistic about that, um that that'll that'll meet a need. I'm sure he'll have a very busy practice right away. We do have a very comprehensive medical services here. Um we've got cardiologists, we've got psychiatrists, we've got neurologists, um you know, we don't do open-heart surgery. We don't, there's a few other very high li- high eye level things that people have to be thrown flown out for for one reason or another, but really, considering we're so rural, um our our medical center is quite good capacity, I would say.
Yeah, good to hear. Yeah, like I said, it's all anecdotal, that's good enough.
Also, I uh first of all, just commend all of you for your forward thinking on this and for bringing us at all to our attention. I heard a little bit about this group from Libby, but I um just really appreciate your efforts. Um Dee, I wanted to just uh ask, mention to you or ask you if the the grant that from the uh or the funding that that might come is from the Colorado Health Foundation, it's something you've applied for?
Yes.
If if it might also, and I know it doesn't cover capital expenditures, but if it would cover grant writing, uh some funding for grant writing for some of the others, to help you secure other funding?
Um I don't know the answer to that, if they would provide that. We have had several people um who have offered their services to to do grant writing because it's a profession. Um I'm pulling it together, I've done it before, but uh those people who've had experience uh really know how to address the the questions and use those words back to the person who's granting it.
Okay, good. Well, it sounds like you're set in that in that way, then.
Never said we.
We're open to any help. Any other comments you guys have for us or suggestions or?
Have you considered ballot measure for funding, with funding, because it's definitely something that, you know, is a need, but you know, it's definitely something in the millions of dollars that would be a cost, and that would take a really insane grant writer to get all that money, or a really good one.
Or sustaining funds.
Right, so to have a sustaining fund.
There might be a situation where, say, the hospital um and the operator come together, which we've been hearing. There's a possibility. There's still a two to five percent gap. And if you start to look at the the sizing of this possibility, a two to five percent gap uh would fall on the community. And a ballot measure might be one of the ways we're up for anyway, but we actually think it's a possible nut to crack. We actually think with good forward thinking on looking at all sorts of grants, all sorts of capital stack approaches, that the amount if the hospital and the operator came together and the land was there, our percentage would be manageable.
We're also sort of looking at Prop one twenty-three months to see how some of those might be used, so.
Well, it's very interesting, and I and I know it's gonna be expensive for for those who do pay the full ride. It's probably eight to ten thousand a month or so.
Yeah, I think uh assisted living um units uh are probably anywhere from four thousand a month to eight thousand a month.
I think you're not wrong, Libby. The front range, the front range for somebody in that category is paying between eight, nine, and eleven. So undoubtedly, by the time we get something built, it's gonna be pretty expensive at the market.
But assisted living is, it's more like ten thousand a month.
And it's gonna be expensive no matter where you are.
Yes.
So it's not like you can just leave here to go somewhere else that's a whole lot cheaper. So if you wanna be here and you wanna continue to keep contributing to the community, then um you know, we need to support these efforts.
Right.
Can you talk about having some housing with like CMC, but you know, as if with any industry in the in the county, it's, you know, we need workers to work at these places, and and they need homes that are affordable in order to work there, so and everything's connected. So like if you build, if you find all the money to build these state-of-the-art facilities, which is really great, but then we don't have anyone to work there because they can't live anywhere here. You know, that's another nut to crack, or to think about something in, you know, in some kind of uh tandem with that.
We are looking at a community uh approach to it that would have the assisted living, that would have um some affordable housing connected with it, perhaps a daycare center connected with it. So it is a total problem we have to solve. You can't just put it in this fancy building and hope it's gonna happen. No, we have to look at all the factors. And we are trying to do that.
Prop Prop one twenty-three that's becoming available might be an avenue for some of the funding for that affordable housing. By the way. Because we do know that people are looking at the possibility with one of the properties that we're considering is using Prop one twenty-three funds to fund that concept.
Right.
Do you have any insights on what are the triggers that cause a person to suddenly or or with planning, you know, go into a a retirement community like this?
Failing health, death of a spouse, um failing health, a fall, um some medical issue, um decline cognitively, uh inability, you know, hearing. So as those things decline, any one of those things can often trip people into needing more assistance with um like maybe cooking is no longer safe in their home.
Macular degeneration is another one, which is getting to be, it seems like, more and more common. So, yeah.
One one thing about macular degeneration is if they're living in their home, I have my mother as an example. She has a two-story house. If you took her out of that two-story house, she would be lost because she knows where things are in her house, and that's what she goes by. And she gets someone that checks on her, you know, three, four times a day. But to get them out of their home, I always have to say something that isn't very nice. I would not put my mother in Columbine Manor because of the
Yes.
the decor, the smell. My grandmother was there. I would do everything in my power to keep her out of Columbine Manor. So what you were saying when you're doing assisted living, is it kind of like a mini apartment where they make, they have the capability of fixing a cup of coffee and that they can do some things on their own, and they still have privacy, and it's decorated kind of like a home and not
Exactly.
a nursing home.
And yet they have someone checking on them all the time and so on. So that was the trigger for my mother. Was um, you know. My my dad died at seventy-seven, my mother remarried at eighty. And they they were together for thirteen years, and then he passed away, and she had, she got macular degeneration during that time. Well, it was okay when he was there because he could still drive and and so on, but once he passed away, you know, I mean, she she couldn't drive. Um and she couldn't get out, and she needed somebody to be watching her all the time, and so um you know, I I think that many of these units are are really very homey and attractive. And yet, um you know, my mother loved to go to happy hour on Fridays. And she could still do that, you know, somebody could help her walk down to happy hour, and she could you know, have fun talking to people, and um and that turned out to really be super for her. And I know everybody has their own situations, and some people that have vision problems, because they know their way around their house, you know, they like to stay there just as absolutely as long as they can because they can can walk through the space and they know how to find it. because they can, can walk through the space and they know how to find it. So it does really vary, I think, kind of at the stage of that. Yeah, it's a challenge, all those situations.
Yeah, I'm encouraged. We have been learning a lot. Of course, this is going on everywhere, all over the world and all over our country. There's a greenhouse project, it's called. And they focus on really making skilled nursing care focused on the individual. It's the patient that's the center, not the medical facility institutionalized approach. They typically have like 10 residents and five staff, and it's very much of a home environment. Everyone has their own room, their own bathroom and some minimal cooking type of facilities and then use the common area. We would like to go bigger than that to start. But it's very encouraging that these patient-oriented, humanistic living spaces are now the, the trend rather than what we have been seeing.
We've been looking at all those models. Another one is called My Best Friend. And it's some, it's in more facilities, but the staff is trained. And one of the things that they are supposed to do is develop a close relationship with either a friend or a family of the patient and find out what kind of music they like, you know? Where did they live before? What was important in their life? You know, if they were an Italian, you know, I mean, all those kinds of things to, to make it all more personal. So we're, we're looking at a lot of that.
And if we have, any of us have thoughts after this, looks like Dee, we've got your email address in the, in the paper that you put in our packet.
Yes.
That's the best one.
It was the end, okay.
Yes.
So again, thank you very much. We appreciate your time and please contact if you, us if you have any suggestions, ideas, questions, or you think of a good connection for us with somebody, that would be great too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm wondering if you could take a minute and talk about the home match program that, that's going on with seniors and, and younger people needing a place to live?
It's a home share program, which is funded by the Next 50 Initiative out of Denver. And it is a full-time position. We're so fortunate to have Janice Brumner back in our community. Somebody who might have known her. She worked at the Area Agency on Aging. She has a lot of experience with working with older people. She is currently trying to solicit homeowners and seekers to make a match between an older person, but it doesn't have to be. There's no age requirements for this. It's somebody who's willing to share their home, has an extra bedroom, wants to help a young person get started. There's a couple of people who just are doing it for altruistic reasons. You know, they just want to do something to help our housing crisis. But the idea is that Janice has a formal application. It's online. If you get on Chig County Health Help website, there's a home share page. You can pull down the actual application for, for home renters and the seekers. She will take those and try and match people. So it's a good fit. She meets with them individually. It's quite a long process. It doesn't happen overnight. And it's very slow. We're consulting with a group out of Denver who's been doing this for many years. And so the idea is that you give this young person a reduced rent, but they're going to in turn mow your lawn for you or, you know, cook a meal once a week or just be there to help you to, to, you know, be a housemate. This is all written in their lease agreement that they both agree to ahead of time. And then Janice is the one that would kind of monitor that relationship to make sure it's going well for both, both parties.
And do they screen?
Oh, yeah. Background checks, reference check, references. And it's, it's quite comprehensive, I would say. And I, I think it's a wonderful possibility for people to consider this. Maybe you've never considered having a housemate, but I can say from personal experience, it's been very enriching to us. Especially have enjoyed having young people in our house who can help us with the technology problems. So I would encourage you, if you're interested at all, to look into that. Janice is also willing to make presentations to anywhere that you think might be interested in knowing.
Appreciate your coming and talking to us. So we'll take a little break and then start our meeting in about two minutes.